All this Board of Supervisors work session meeting. Quarter, we have an amended agenda this evening. Gentlemen, any comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion that we amend the agenda once more so that we've got some, we have the presenters here, make it not such a long evening for them. I would propose that we amend item four, adding item A as Sweet Sue Solar Facility Updates. Item B is Certified Local Government Designation. Item C will be the Library Discussion. Then I propose that we strike six E and six out in the quarter.
Sorry, we have a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Trip me up there. Their roll call.
There's no reason. Just a courtesy for folks, not they have to sit around for potentially hours. Okay, Ms. Ms. Brandt, if you would, do your roll call.
Here.
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 Here. And I'm sorry, a little lot of water there. Okay, Ms. Bright, if you would take it off for us. Ms. Bright's gonna give us an update on the Sweet Sue Solar Project. We're all anxiously waiting to hear.
Good evening, and thank you for adjusting the schedule. I appreciate that, the agenda. So, um, as far as Sweet Sue, um, the last time I was here, we were putting in the permit for the Certificate of Public Convenience and Necessity. The next day it was approved, so we've had that approval on March fifteenth. The next anticipated dates will be the DEQ Stormwater and the County Land Disturbance, which we're anticipating hopefully with the county's participation by May fifteenth. They'll still conform with statewide utility exemptions from the county building permits. And then the next anticipated dates will be deconstruction, which will be May of this year, and hopefully operation by quarter four of two thousand and twenty-three. Any questions?
Not necessarily for you, but I have a question.
Okay.
This, this, I'm thinking that somebody in administration will have to answer this. The conditional use permit, they were, I guess back then it was Inven Energy. It was rollback taxes due on that property. Have they been paid yet? I was told that a physical permit had to be issued prior to the requirement. And I understand that Dominion Energy is not required because they are a utility to have a tax. Is that correct?
That's right.
So have they?
I don't know what their rollback taxes status is, but I do know we were going to consider the land disturbance permit as their construction permit to satisfy that.
So, so would that be the requirement when that is issued, the rollback taxes would be due?
I have to check with the chairman.
Okay, all right, okay, all right, thanks.
Any other questions?
Oh, one other thing. I know that we had a citizen that filed a contested the, the crossing through VMRC. I understand that he's satisfied at this point.
Yes, he did withdraw.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Okay, Ms. Bright, I'm sorry you came all the way.
That's okay.
Two minutes, but thank you for coming.
Not a problem. You would like in-person updates each month?
Uh, that'd be great. Zoom is fine also. You said it's an hour drive, so we'll take it either way. Appreciate the updates.
All right, well, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. He's not here, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
Okay, we're going.
Ms. Funkhager would be long.
Sure. Mr. Fisher hasn't arrived yet, so we'll alter the schedule again.
He knew he was pretty late on the agenda looking at it, so I'm not surprised that he's out here right now.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. I just wanted to comment on the solar farm. It's my understanding as soon as work starts, like the first shovel on the ground or whatever, is when my office will issue the rollback taxes. And we will issue the bill. When it was calculated before, but then it couldn't be issued because the work hadn't actually started, it was about eighty thousand dollars.
How much?
So.
Eighty?
Mm-hmm, about it. And I have thirty days to pay it once it's issued.
Thank you.
So I wanted to address the board this evening. I have three items of good news to share with the board. And Vision is finally has an export file that has been provided to Ms. Brooks, and she has sent it to Timmons. And the GIS system, the county's GIS system, that hasn't been updated since last May, will be updated within the next two or three weeks, however long Timmons takes. And there should be no more disruptions in the regular quarterly updates with the GIS. I want to tell you, for January, February, and March of two thousand and twenty-two, seven parcels were subdivided. I created a hundred and nine new parcels. Most of those were from Central Crossing, Section two A, lots seventy-seven through one-twenty or whatever. And each new parcel is assessed a home site. So the increase in land value from those hundred and nine parcels is two point nine million dollars that will be on the tax rolls, you know, next year.
That is new revenue.
Yeah, that'll be new revenue, and that we're keeping track of for the reassessment with equalization rate. And also, two weeks ago, I heard on the radio about a DMV clinic in Tappahannock organized by the Commissioner of Revenue. So I contacted Tommy Blackwell, their Commissioner of Revenue in Essex, and asked him how I could have the DMV clinic here in King William County. So Mr. Blackwell sent a message to his DMV contact and that I was interested, and the DMV connect contact contacted me, and they are coming to King William County on May fifth in Allen at the Recreation Center, and they'll be there from nine thirty, I think, till three thirty. All the services except for testing will be available. Ms. Hoffman at the Parks and Recreation Manager was very helpful in accommodating when I contacted her by using the facility. There's no cost to the county other than the two ads I placed in the courier to appear on April thirteenth and twenty-seventh. And then I have some flyers, flyers I'm gonna give to Chris, that maybe I, maybe you could put them at the firehouse or, you know, your church or wherever to advertise it. And we'll put it in the library in here, and Ms. Brandt said she'll put it on the website. I didn't want it any sooner because you'll have to make appointments, and appointments won't be available till tomorrow. And on the flyers, there's a website, and she'll post the flyer on the county website. And then a few days prior, if there's not enough appointments, then it will become available for walk-ins. And I just think this would be a great service and convenience for the King William citizens.
Do you have any idea how, how many they can support or serve simultaneously?
How many, what?
How many customers they can support simultaneously?
I think they're gonna have two people come, so they can, I don't know how often they schedule, like, two people every fifteen minutes, or I guess it depends on the type appointment that they make, but it'll be right here in Allen, very central location, much more convenient for our citizens. And then if it's successful, they can come back. So that's all my good news for today.
Awesome. Well, that's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Karina. We appreciate the hard work.
Mr. Ashcraft, I think we'll go ahead and roll into the library discussion.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen, there've been numerous correspondences that have been generated over the last forty-eight to seventy-two hours regarding the proposal from the original library system to King William County for FY twenty-three. Been a number of statements made in those correspondences relative to ramifications that may take place if, if funding levels are not achieved in the proposal that has been submitted by the library director. It was requested that Mr. Shepley appear before you this evening and answer some questions and, and try to get a more definitive outcome of what the proposal that has been made by the library system might actually be in, in real dollars and in, in real, in real hours and in, and real opportunities for the, for the library moving forward. So Mr. Shepley is here tonight. I would ask that he could, he would come forward, and the board can either ask questions or he can make a statement, whichever, or whatever you're prepared to do. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mr. Ashcraft, thank you. I mean, I was here before with our presentation, so maybe it would be more useful for your time to answer your questions.
Can I go? I know that an email was sent out to, I guess, you know, your membership in the local, probably both ends of the county, West Point and King William. Do we have a number of, do you have a physical number of the, the membership?
I, no, I did not bring that with me tonight, I'm sorry. I can double-check that and come back to you. I think that was in the original budget request as well.
Yeah, well, I'd like to see that. I'd like to compare that number to the number of responses that we got about funding.
Okay.
I spoke to a member of the Board of Supervisors in King and Queen County today, and they are also level funding. And I think that same email was sent to all of their citizens that are involved with the library in King and Queen, I guess it's at Marriott. Have they stepped up to the plate to fund any more than, than level funding?
Not that I know of. They're having their meeting this evening. Same, same here and on the, on the budget, so.
And, yeah, well, honestly, the problem that I had with that email was, it was the amount of funding that we are now funding was not included. I think that most people, the ones that, you know, that physically called me, that I reached out to, they were not aware of the amount of funding that we were, that we were giving the, the library. Well, wife got that email also, she's a member of the library. It, it seems like maybe we're cutting, not cutting, level funding means we're, we're gonna miss your ask by maybe a hundred fifty, a hundred sixty thousand dollars, which works out to maybe thirty-two, thirty-three percent. And in that email, it was, it was mentioned that you might have to cut your hours by fifty percent. I don't know how that math works.
As I explained when I was here with the budget request first time, first part of your funding goes to pay to be a part of the region and to fund the shared services. Things like the collection, the technology, the professional librarian staff. And beyond that, if you wanted to have, you know, six branches open like Hanover does, you'd have to fund the money for those branches to be open. And so with flat funding, that request doesn't cover more than half of our hours.
It was also mentioned, the hourly rate of some employees, I think, was twelve, twelve dollars an hour or something to that extent. What is the physical number of employees that you have at the West Point Library in, in the central garage?
It's approximately twenty-five people.
Is that full-time and part-time?
There's one full-time person, the manager at each site. Everyone else is part-time.
And, and how much of a raise were, were you projecting if, if it was level funded for, for those employees?
So, because we talked about the system-wide, because we're managing a system in that four separate systems. So we have a hundred and twenty-five people system-wide. Six, sixty-one of them, that's an updated count from earlier in the budget process, but as of today, I've got sixty-one people that are under twelve dollar an hour minimum wage amount. That's a statutory change. They're all gonna have to be brought up, and I, I can't really have half of my staff at twelve dollars an hour. We've proposed, we're asking for funding to go to fifteen dollars an hour. When the minimum wage was seven and a quarter, our starting salary for the library associate for the vast majority of our positions was ten fifty-four. They're not minimum wage jobs. You have to have computer skills, customer service skills. You have to have some understanding of how libraries work, and we had to train all of those people. We've had a difficult time with retention and recruitment. We're trying to address those issues.
So does that mean the ones that are twelve dollars an hour, that you would bring up to fifteen dollars an hour, does that equate to a three-dollar wage, wage increase across the board for all employees?
It's not across the board, and we've got people that have been here, you know, twenty years. Their adjustments are different.
All right, I think I've asked enough questions.
Did we ever get a grasp on what other members of the system were doing? We just, I discussed it in probably the last email I sent out. Do, do you have numbers from, you know, it's about being Hanover's biggest fund?
Hanover's the biggest funder. Hanover's supporting us. Goochland is the second biggest, and they're supporting us.
Now, I guess on our end, and we discussed this when you were here, I mean, when we're talking a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, that's a two-cent tax increase, is what that is. You know, this is in a year where we are not only looking to, I mean, we're, we're looking at doing a baiting to the double-digit percentage because of, of what people are experiencing with car values right now. We're proposing reductions on the real estate level because, I mean, people's costs and the burden on, on people that are having to pay these taxes is, is higher than it's ever been. You know, and in recognition of that, we're, we're trying to live within our means, hunt tests. And so when we, you know, prepared a budget, obviously, what, what you would see in the proposal tonight is we've got proposal for, for tax reductions to try to provide for, to, you know, relate to some people. And I think the stark reality of this is that in order to meet this funding request, we're not only going to have to eliminate those tax reductions, we're probably going to have to go above where we were. I mean, that's, that's, that's the cold hard reality facing this board, is I think, speaking for myself, as much as I would absolutely love to, and that in the past absolutely advocated for the library to get what it needs. In the past, there was a, a cut that got pushed through. You'll, you might recall just a couple of years ago, and, and I fought very hard to get that back into the budget. We got a budget amendment done to get that funding done, and I guess I'm struggling sitting here right now to try to understand how level funding, which is what we're achieving for all of our organizations, and what we have tried very hard to achieve year over year is, is to level fund and not reduce these things, how it leads to a fifty percent reduction in hours of service. It boggles the mind, because if I said that if I don't get a fifty percent increase in taxes, that I'm gonna take all the deputies off the road, people would be asking me some tough questions. And I think that's, because I can tell you, this board, when we had that discussion with you during that presentation, we, we were, and I felt like I, myself, personally, took time to explain to you that this was gonna be a difficult ask to meet, and at no point in time were we told that not meeting this was going to be a fifty percent reduction in hours. Now that we all understood that there might be things that we can't accomplish or can't achieve, or that there might be some reductions, but fifty percent seems extreme.
When I was here to present the budget, that was in advance of your county administrator's proposed budget being completed, correct?
It was.
So we came and we gave you information about our needs, not able to predict where you're gonna fund us at, and what kind of adjustment we're gonna have to make with that. I came out last week to meet with Mr. Ashcraft, and I definitely shared that information with him then. But that was gonna be half the hours. I mean, you know, it's a significant difference in what our request was. And I understand you are in a difficult situation as well. Part of being a, part of the region is sharing those expenses, those shared expenses. That's what makes the region efficient. So the money that I have left, or the library board would have left, goes towards keeping your branch operating. If I cut it from, say, our materials budget to keep your branches open, that in effect is a cut for Goochland, Hanover, and King and Queen. We can't allow that to happen mathematically with the budget. So again, it's those operating hours where we have the flexibility, if you will, to be able to adjust and to have to adjust by, you know, way over a hundred thousand dollars with those two branches that are open fifty-four hours a week, six days a week, nights and weekends to serve the public. We just don't have room to do it anywhere else.
No other organization this year came with a thirty-three-plus percent increase in budget request. We just couldn't, as Mr. Muscausy mentioned, it's hard to wrap our heads around it. Where we see that you, you've presented a, an updated request.
Yeah.
My automatic question is the hotspots. How are they, that's, I think you mentioned in the presentation, I looked at the YouTube and listened to it again a couple of times. I believe you mentioned a forty-six thousand dollar cost for the hotspots themselves.
Yes.
That's for King William.
System-wide. Again, the, we, we're not creating a budget for King William, we're creating a budget for the monthly regional library and it serves all four locales.
Was, was that forty-six thousand increase, was that an increase over and above the previous? Or is, is that what the hotspot, I think it's the cost, the cost of?
The cost of the hotspots themselves.
You know, what was it in the, in the previous year?
We were able to use federal pandemic relief funding to be able to cover the cost.
So has, which will not be provided, of course, this year, and therefore that's an increase in order to cover the expenses of hotspots?
To be able to cover that.
Okay, that's a little more clear.
You're.
With, with school being back in, in classroom, is there still a, a dire need for that kind of expense for hotspots?
They are basically checked out ninety-nine percent of the time.
Are they unlimited use, or how many?
Well, we, we have them off of a state contract that does not have a data limit to it.
They, they serve the same purpose as if a student would have a Chrome somewhere that had access to Wi-Fi, correct?
They're the source of the Wi-Fi. So if you have a, if you have a school computer or a computer from work, you can connect to that hotspot and, and get Wi-Fi off of it. It, it gets service from the phone system and send that signal Wi-Fi, like the county probably has in the room here available for folks.
So the way you're explaining this, it sounds like we can't opt out of the hotspots. Is that correct? We're, we're, we're paying a portion on the entire region.
You're paying a, a proportion.
I mean, if we're trying to pay the increases in salary, how much would that be? And not the hotspots.
So we, the information that I've provided from Mr. Ashcraft, sort of that bottom-line number of not having a cut in hours, is including the hotspots. Because I do have, again, Hanover and Goochland, eighty percent, that are saying, yeah, we still need the hotspots in our community.
In theory, could King? Could King William opt out of hotspots?
Not really, because they're part of that collection. Your citizens would still have access to them.
Not if we were to not fund it, right?
Well, the, the library board will approve the final budget. They've got funding to serve eighty percent of the folks. I'm guessing that's because that's one of the shared services. We share the hotspots. And I'm guessing that that would be something that the library board would continue to fund, which would be, in effect, a reduction in your hours.
Which would be fifty percent of the hours, is what was stated.
No, flat funding was half of the hours.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
So the hotspots is not all of the funding request.
So if we, if we level fund, we, we will have access to everything. Only the hours will be cut fifty percent. Is, is that correct? That, I think that's what that email said.
Half, half the hours will, will go away if you level fund.
One thing I'll say, Gil, that I didn't get a point one on not being able to get a hotspot or getting a hotspot.
I didn't either.
It was hours.
Because there is certainly adequate internet access within the library itself. And the, are there, are they broadcasting external to the facilities? Does anyone know?
The library?
The, the signal bleeds out of the building. It's not specifically broadcast.
Like here, we have antennas that actually broadcast, the schools have antennas that broadcast outside of the building. I just looked at more, more information, how many hotspots, how many? I just see that as a direct cost-saving measure. But if they're gonna be shared resources, then it makes it a lot more difficult.
Yeah, they don't, they don't, they don't sit in the buildings. People take them home and use them where they need.
Are there restrictions on how long they can be checked out?
I believe they go out for two weeks.
Right. And how many do we have in King William? Upper King William, and, and how many do we have in western, a lot, so?
You probably have twelve or fourteen between the two of them. We have a hundred and twenty of them, and your sort of per capita portion there is around ten percent. They, like, like the books, they move around as well.
I don't know what else to say, Mr. Chairman. I mean, the point is, no other outside organization came with this type of request. No other outside organization is, is threatening a fifty percent reduction in their service. It, it's, it's I, if we had a department come with this, we would have a big, big problem with it. If, if we just as a board in our own funding had a, a situation like this, people would have a big, big problem with it. I, I I support the library. I, I don't know how we can do this unless, again, because you're gonna have people come up and they're gonna say that they support the library, and it's great. But, you know, we're, we're not talking about just a, okay, well, here's the money. You know, we're gonna, we're gonna take a dispatcher out. The dispatch is, is one way we can achieve this. We can take the classified fighters out of the academy. There's one way we can achieve this. You know, this is not squeezing the balloon. These are, these are high consequence choices. And I, I have a, a problem with how it was communicated. I have a problem with the tactics. I, I do, frankly. And, and I feel pretty strongly, if you communicated to Mr. Ashcraft that it was this drastic a reduction, we, it would have been communicated to us as well, because there's nothing that goes to him that does not come to us. And so to find out about it from an email on, you know, that my wife got on a Friday evening, it's unsavory to me, and it did not sit well with me at all. You know, because the budget proposal has been out for weeks, and, and I've heard nothing. I've heard nothing until, you know, I find out on a, on a Friday night that rather than telling us about this that, you know, we're, we're having the, the membership cardholders, of which I am one, unleashed upon us without a clue as to, as to how we, we, we would have gotten. So I don't know. This is doesn't, it does not sit well with me, Mr. Chairman. That's all I can say.
You're not giving us any wiggle room at all. I mean, no alternative.
And that, that is dramatic. It's nuclear.
Yeah. I'll go so far as to say that I totally agree with, with Travis, with, with his opinion. And honestly, I think that if, if, if we were to meet your, your ask at this point in time, we would be opening floodgates to everybody that comes to the board and, and has an ask that we can't meet. That this is, this would be, they would think, would be a way that they could, they could get their ask. I was very angry too with, with the way it was done, and I think the good people in King and Queen are not happy either. with with the way it was done. And I think the good people in King William are not happy either. But, you know, that's that's a choice, you know, for everybody here. I I'm not in favor of it.
Another thing we can do, a lot of the emails said it was for the kids. I mean, the library is open. Oh, hours, like you said, day and night, seven days a week. We could close them in the morning and just be open for when the kids get out of school. That could be an option. We could just be open after the kids get out of school to cover. The bad thing is it's still hurt. They're programmed for younger boys.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we when we when we closed them, I mean, you'll recall, we took them from um, you know, when we did that twenty thousand dollar, they had a twenty thousand dollar increase asked a few years ago and we didn't do it. They they kind well, I said, I don't like some hours then, it's still regardless, it affects people. And that's that's but really.
Just like this airport authority, I mean, we have no control over. Once you get the money, they do what they want, just like everything else. They figure they're going to use it for the hotspots rather than being hours. There's nothing we can do about it. I don't like it either. If it was up to me, I'd defund them completely. But because like I'm with Mr. Garber here, I will, we shouldn't be treated like this and we should set an example.
Okay, we've got a lot to ponder. Thanks for coming out. I'm sure Mr. Hashcraft will be in touch if there's any final comments you care to make. Please, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Fisher, I see has uh Mr. Fisher, if you'd uh Evening, sir. You had a long day.
Been a long day. Good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, Mr. Ashcraft. Uh, my name is Carl Robert Fisher. Uh, I reside at sixteen eighty-five Sweet Hall Road in the county. And I am also the chair of the county's Historic Preservation and Architectural Review Board. I'm here to discuss with you certified local government program and hope that the county would agree to participate in this program. You've received previous material from me uh, about this program, so I'm not going into great detail, but rather I'm going to try to summarize the major points. It's interesting to note that the United States was very late in getting into programs for historic preservation. It was not until really nineteen ninety-six that we passed the National Historic Preservation Act that set up programs to have national historic landmarks and so forth. But compared to other countries, we were pretty late. And unfortunately, we lost a lot of res- resources uh during that period of time. When the federal government decided to put this program together in nineteen ninety-six, they put it under, interestingly enough, the National Park Service, and that's where it stands today. If we look at what is the certified local government, it it is actually a partnership between three parties. First, local government. Second, the state's preservation office, which is housed in the state's Department of Historic Resources and at the federal government, uh, the National Park Service. You, as a local government, would be asked to assume a formal role in the identification, evaluation and protection of the community's historic resources. And of course, the board that I'm the chair of would really be responsible for for ca- taking control of that for you. In exchange for you participating in the program, there are several things that King William would gain. First of all, if the state was ready to submit an application to the federal government for a national historic landmark, King William County would be given an opportunity to review that application and comment on it before it went up to the federal level. We also would receive technical assistance, both from the State Department of Historic Resources and the National Park Service. We also would have the ability to apply for grants. And fourthly, we would be given complete access to the state's uh database. Uh, your board, uh, the historic uh, board has worked over the past several years very hard to apply for the certified local government. And we certainly have appreciated Mr. Hodges for his petition participation. I think he's made just about every meeting that we've had. The program, o- one thing that I wanted to comment on, although I think we are fully qualified now to pu- to participate in that program. There's one stipulation that they have is that they really would like somebody with an architecture background to be on that uh, on that board. I think we could, they would make an exception because of the really strong historic background of all the other members of that board. But we we would like to strengthen our application. And we'd also like to gain the experience from one of your stem uh staff members, Steve Hudgens, a county employee, who happens to have a degree in architecture. And we would hope that you would consider maybe appointing him uh to the board at the at the next meeting. That's sort of my summary, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Did you ask Steve about this before tonight?
Pardon?
Did you ask Mr. Hudgens about this?
He's willing to serve, yes.
He doesn't want to raise, does he?
These these grants that you mentioned, are they matching?
They're match. There are matching grants. There are some opportunities for non-matching grants. And as in the past, the the other thing that I'm a member of is the Historical Society. We're we're also interested in helping in participation in that matching grants, and we've done that before.
Where where do does King William stand in comparison with some of these CLGs listed here? Do we have massive potential? Is it is it just here waiting to be recognized? And I'm trying to get in my head around where we are as as
the potential to be re-
We're going to be a CLG, I assume. But where do we stand in in comparison to these other counties whose monasteries, uh, middle?
Yeah, I sent you the list, okay? That's one of the big, big problems, okay? I've sent down to various meetings that the state Department of Historic Resources on. And you get things like Fredericksburg, okay? And they have their historic district. And they have detailed rules for this street and this street. See, we're a rural community. And I go to those meetings and I say, I talk to some of the other rural people. They have some of the same the same problems. If you look at our historic districts, a- all of our historic districts were really established around either churches or plant or plantations. And we don't have a a an organized community, but that doesn't mean that we shouldn't try to preserve structures that are in the in the community. One of the things that my board is looking at doing right now, we participated several years ago with the State Department of Historic Resources. I think that was one of the things that the Historical Society provided a match for. And we surveyed several hundred homes in the county. And of those homes, we came up with a list about twenty-five. The county, we didn't survey, but state came in and surveyed uh them. They they don't go on the property, but they try to get as much information about the background and they take pictures and so forth. And they came back to us. They said there are about twenty-five places in Virginia that would be eligible probably for registration on the National Registry of Historic Places. So one of the things that we are going to do at, we started at our last meeting, is we're going to start to take those twenty-five, contact the 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 landowners and say, you know, your 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 program, your house might be eligible for this, and we'd like to at least tell you what the program is about. So there's the opportunity, although we're rural, there's still a lot of structures around that are worth preserving in some in some way.
Mr. Ashcraft, we would execute this by resolution. What's the next step?
You need a letter from John by the chairman. Is that correct?
Yeah, we do. Um, actually, in in reality, the letter is going to a different person than it's going to be addressed to, because the state, the state people are all working from home. But I'll get back with the secretary and say and say that. And we probably need a couple of weeks for us to submit that. And if you're interested in 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 putting Steve on, we'd love to have that in. We and if you're interested in doing that, we would delay our application until we could put his na- name on. But I'll work, I'll I'll work with your secretary in terms of getting that letter letter together. It's supposed to be signed by the chairman of of the board supervisors.
And gentlemen, we're generally good with this this concept? Thank you, Mr. Fisher.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, tonight you have three public hearings that are scheduled relative to the FY twenty-three budget. The first one will be the budget document itself and the contents therein. The second one will be the proposed tax levies for calendar year twenty twenty-two uh into twenty-three, and then an ordinance that would create a a new fee schedule in our utility department. I will be presenting them one at a time. I will say right up front that all the public hearings have been properly advertised. Uh, there's been plenty of notice out. Uh, we've done our best to uh to let the public know that this night is occurring. And hopefully uh we achieve that goal, even if there's folks not here. They are pretty knowledgeable now of what is included in the FY twenty-three budget. Uh, I presented the budget, my recommendation to you on March the fourteenth. Tonight, uh, this uh this slideshow is going to be very reduced to what I had certainly presented on March fourteenth, but I thought it was important just to give a a basic summary of what is in the budget document. And then certainly any comments that are made by the public and yourself will be considered as you move forward for eventual adoption. Okay, again, to go over the budget process, um, this budget is uh is introduced after three work sessions that we had, pre-budget work sessions with the board. Department heads, constitutional officers and outside agencies brought forth their requests to the board, uh, which helped me to formulate my recommendations after we had those work sessions. Now, I remind everyone that this budget is balanced, which is important, because it's statutorily it has to be. And it has to be approved by this board by June the thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Financial management is very important. It's, uh, I said before that this is the single most important activity that the board conducts during the course of the year. And right now, King William is a seventy million dollar business. And philosophically, that's how I try to direct uh staff in thinking. And I certainly uh know that that's important to you, that knows that every category of funding and and revenues and expenditures that we undertake is run in a business like me in it. Budget management follows all the financial policies that are adopted by the board in previous years. Uh, this budget does not step outside of any of those policies. As you know, we're waiting on the completion of the FY twenty-one audit. Uh, there's there's works being done. It's ongoing every day. And we hope to have that completed uh in a short period of time. I know you've heard that before, but there is progress being made. But one thing I'd like to point out, it's been uh that's been noticed by folks who who have said that there's a a large degree of percentage increases in this budget. Well, when you compare the actual budget presentation that's before you and then the FY twenty-two budget that was adopted, uh, what's missing are the FY twenty-one actuals that would be in our audit. So people are starting to compare that number with this number, and it's not an accurate number as far as percentage increases. And you'll find that uh that certain funding like ARPA, uh, the American Rescue Act, is not included in uh in the previous FY twenty-two spending. But it is now included in the in the information for FY twenty-three. But because we don't have the FY twenty-two actuals and FY twenty-one uh audit to compare it to, it looks like it's a huge increase in the budget document, and it's really not. Yes, there is an increase. There's no doubt about that. But it's not in the amount that is being uh that is being generated, and that is probably a mistake that we did not bring that point further when we were presenting the budget on March the fourteenth. I just want to remind everyone that uh King Wayne is very unique with their split level uh model of funding. Uh, it was codified by the General Assembly in twenty fourteen. It created a special tax district to fund this uh King William schools from the voting districts to uh through five. Taxes are separated to fund uh the general fund apart from the public schools in King William. And then this uh split levy allows King William County and the town of West Point to each fund a separate school system. Looking at expenditures, this budget is just shy of seventy million dollars. It said we're seventy million dollar business. And it's ten point nine percent over FY twenty-two, but again, that is the proposed budget and not actual. And to get the actual, we would have to have what the spending would be, say, for six months or for nine months. And um, so it is an increase, but it it's far below ten point nine percent. Our general fund is thirty million, one hundred and sixty-five thousand, four hundred and thirty-four uh as proposed, and that's a seven point three percent over FY twenty-two. You see the pie chart uh of the general fund budget expenditures. T salaries and benefits take up uh a twenty-nine percent of that. The transfer to the school division is certainly the greatest expense we have. Then you have others that are falling into place, public assistance programs and your general operations, school debt and county debt. And to summarize uh some of the contents within the budget, uh, it funds the public school division at the request that it it had made. It funds the annual debt payments uh that we have as an obligation. It funds twenty-eight outside organizations. It funds our capital program. And it keeps the unassigned balance above the board policy of twenty percent of general fund expenditures. It would probably be around the twenty-four percentile. Now, looking at revenues very quickly, you see the real property would continue to be the largest revenue producer up for the county and personal property coming in uh next to that. Then you have the other breakdowns, and many of those uh funds that are machinery and tools and so on are dedicated tax that has been going to the the school division uh over the years. Looking at real estate, uh, we we will experience a growth of eight hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars. That's a that's an estimate. And that would be a six point two percent increase over FY twenty-two. So as a result, uh, through discussions with the board, it's recommended that at least one point five uh cent decrease in real property rate uh be uh be part of this budget proposal. And I say at least because the board has been considering uh taking another penny to reduce it. The proposal right now is uh possibly the school division. But right now, the the tax rate that's before you and the public will comment on is eighty-four and a half cents. The real property. And this would return two hundred and forty-five thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollars to county tax pay. So with that, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, I'm open to uh for you to open your public hearing. If you have questions before that, I will try to answer them this evening. If not, it's the public.
Any questions or comments before we kick it off? Okay, thank you, Mr. Asher. Okay, we're going to head on into the public hearings. Again, we're having three separate ones, the proposed budget. Then the next one will be the proposed tax levies for calendar year twenty twenty-two. And finally, the the county code for utility fee schedules. So three separate public hearings. Individuals will have an opportunity to speak at three minutes apiece. If you're representing a group, five minutes. I'll give, I'll try to give you a thirty-second warning as close as I can. No one has signed up online this branch so far, still, okay? So we'll go ahead, and again, the first one will be the proposed FY twenty-three budget. Public comment period is now open. Don't you occur that or not? Okay. Anyone wishing to speak?
I'm Raymond Carter. I sent you guys an email not too long ago on the sixth of April, talking about the tax cuts and the budget. As you know, there's a seven point nine percent inflation, highest in forty years here throughout this country. Gas taxes, I mean, gas prices alone have gone up more than double in four years. Not only that, we have the highway usage fee that has been implemented this year. This is all impacting us as taxpayers, us as taxpayers, you as well for county operation. You have two point six billion dollar surplus in the state of Virginia. The governor has called for reduction in personal property taxes on vehicles. That is what he signed in accordance with House Bill twelve thirty-nine. You have several sources of funding outside of taxpayers to pull from the USDA under their REIT, the rural programs to build it, the Department of Transportation, the Virginia Department of Transportation, the Virginia Department of Education, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, also known as FEMA, and other organizations within the state. The cost of living is increasing daily. I know we just did an assessment and it was overturned. We're still going through that process, and I appreciate y'all's efforts in that and helping bring back money to the taxpayers and save us from that debacle. But I'm also asking that you look at these increases on all of us. We don't, you saw on the chart where we, as the property owners, are the ones putting majority of the bill with our tax dollars. We're not bringing too many businesses in here, we need to do that. None of us are getting any younger, and we need to invest in the youth and jobs here as well. We want to stabilize our economy, we need to invest in our future. It does not seem like we are doing that too well. Thirty seconds. Yes, sir. Another unemployment rate in King William County, as posted on the county website, is three point zero percent. That's an increase in unemployed personnel, that's tax dollars, that's revenue, that's businesses. The USDA has expected food inflation rates to increase between four point five to five point five percent in the grocery stores. In restaurants, it is increasing five point five to six point five percent. All of that is going to impact every one of them, whether it's the officer eating at lunch or it's one of us going out and eating at lunch. Yes, sir. I'll step down, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? One last chance, anyone else for the twenty-three budget? And again, this okay, reluctant.
Just real quick, and my name is Audrey Mitchell. I know the whole the library thing is a little upsetting to me because I think it's one thing that can serve every citizen and its community. And I think sometimes people forget how much of an impact it does have in some of life. A couple of weeks ago, I was here and they had the planning commission talking about the future and and all the things that were going to change. And I think when you, when you look at this budget and when you look at things that we have, you might not be able to do a hundred percent of what you've been asked to give for the library. But I do think it's important that you look at it, and I think you look at the future. And I know gas is up, I know everything else is up, but I think we need to look in that, what the planning commission was looking at in that big twenty-year plan. We are a growing community, and we don't need to be an undereducated community. So I think that's something that you need to kind of just let it settle. I know, I know you all have a hard job. The problem is for all of us. If I go to Walmart, I don't go to the Walmart in King William. I don't go to the hospital in King William. I don't go to any of the big generating things, money things that are, we lack in our county, we just do. But I do think there's opportunities that maybe we can continue to grow for both the town of West Point, the library down there, and the one up here. And I I hope that you all take some of that into consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is May May Sanford, I live in West Point. I I want to speak also to what the previous speaker said. And that is, I, the, the library, I think, is extremely important, not for kids, yes, but for for everybody in our community. One of the things about hotspots and computer access is that people who are losing jobs, people who are looking for jobs, people, you have to, you have to be connected in through the internet. And hotspots, in-house computers are one of the valuable things that that the library does for everybody. I think that the resources, books, materials, I know that when I have problems with with internet access, with problem solving, the West Point Library helps me. I see them helping other people. This is a resource that is we, we've been talking. There's been a lot of discussion about broadband. The libraries are one of the ways that that people can be connected up to to the network, the absolutely essential network these days. Other education, the library, we need it, and I understand the difficulties, Travis, that you were talking about, about where do we do it, how do we do it? And it may not be an all or nothing, but I'm terribly concerned about the future of the library in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jackie Downer, and I live in Kennington. And I am a member of the library here in King William. And I feel that there is more that goes on in the library other than people going there for a book. There are so many programs that they have for the children, for adults. I used to go there for yoga myself. That was one of the programs that they had. But of course, after COVID, we couldn't do that anymore. People have meetings there all the time. People go there for internet service, people go there for help. There are lots of people in the county that don't have internet service, and that's where they go. They're like the defunding or whatever, whatever it is that the flat rate or whatever that you've been talking about. If you don't have librarians, you don't have a library. So if you want professional people in the library that are going to be able to help people, librarians have to go to college and learn how to be librarians, they just don't pop out, you know? So it's, it's, they're professional people, they need to be paid proper wages. They need to be taken care of, and the people in the county need to be taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Henry Kidos, and I'm a resident of King William. I'm a library member. And just a quick, short story about when the pandemic started, I was looking for a job. And I didn't have a computer, so I went to the library. And as you know, at that time, most companies were requesting paperwork, applications, so forth via computer. And I, like I said, I did not have that, and I didn't have very good computer skills at the time either. So I went to the library, King William, and the staff was very helpful. They helped me navigate the computer and submit my application and resume to BDOT. And I got a job with BDOT. I've been with them for a year now. So I feel that I'm a, you know, better person for that, and I fully support the library and the staff that that helped me be where I am today. So it's, it's for everybody. And I'm just a case in point, letting you know tonight that I'm one of those that walked in, asked for help, and they helped, they were very professional, courteous. And I'm here to offer my support, and I hope you do too, because I believe they deserve it, they need it, we need it as a community for everyone, young and older. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I am Lucy Thornton Edwards, and I'm from West Point, lifelong resident. And I'm also one of those people who has a long memory of not having access to a library, going in and looking at the books and being told, don't sit down at that table, you can't borrow books, you can't do anything, because I was born here. And in those days, colored children did not get to use the library. And when I go to our library now, I'm impressed that it's used by a variety of people, everybody. And there's nobody there telling you if other patrons come in, you've got to get up, you cannot be trying to sit in the seat, so you can't be touching the books. And so with that kind of background, I can tell you that I'm very supportive of keeping our, our library well-funded and making sure that our children, all of them, have access to what's available within the county. Now, I can also tell you that I I know when you're struggling with a budget, that you're going to be looking at a lot of elements. I think the major thing is the library must be open to the extent that I can tell you, I personally care about libraries to the extent that I've been saying I need to open my own library. If the county doesn't do what it's got to do, then it's something that I should consider at least getting funding for because it is critical for adults and children. And I would say to you, do think about funding the library, not where it is now, but beyond where it is. And most importantly, leave it open because there are folks who would not have access to a computer and other basic data if the library were not there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Hicks, and I am currently the president of Friends of the Library here in King William. And I am in full support of keeping this library open, doing what we can do and what we need to do to do just that. The children are our future. We've been told that time and time again. And if we don't make the public library available to our children, how are they going to learn? We will be so far down the economic educational table that we won't have anybody to be in positions like you are today. We need our library. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Marilyn Held, and I live in Kennington. I've been here for almost seven years. The population here in King William has increased by about twelve thousand people in the past ten or eleven years. And with that brings a lot of children. Our schools can do only so much, they're only open a certain amount of time if a child needs help with the computer or learning how to do a research paper. Libraries are evolving today. They're different than they were years ago. Between eBooks and Kindles and, you know, the internet, it's not just going to get a book. Libraries today are teaching our children and adults about technology. They're also helping children with career and college readiness. There are a number of children, many, many children, who don't know how to fill out a college application. And their parents don't know the exact form, you know? And the schools could only do so much. They're doing everything they can. The teachers, the, the student can't say to a teacher, gee, you know, it's math class, but I'd like to go and have somebody teach, show me about filling out this college, this college application. We need to encourage our children that we, as a community, and especially a rural community, that education for our children is one of the top three priorities in our, in our state, in our community. So that's really what I have to say. And I would hope that our libraries are evolving into the new ways that are happening in the twenty-first, in our twenty twenty-one. And there was a summit in two thousand and nineteen in Berlin. It was called the Next Generation Libraries. And I have been trying to find what came about and what is being done to, you know, to offer what is needed for libraries today. And I was locked out when I tried to find out, but I will work on it further. But I want to say, please consider education. Your children, my children are grown. Your children are the future here, and your grandchildren, and my grandchildren. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else this evening? Okay, we're going to go ahead and close the public comment period. Mr. Ashcraft? Proposed tax levies.
Ms. Chairman, your second public hearing. Is relative to the proposed tax levies. The general fund levy, and if you look at the, the top four categories that are bold. Those are the ones that have changed. The others would go unchanged from, from the previous year. As we noted in the previous discussion, the real estate is reduced by half a cent in the general fund. And that carries with it, it includes mobile homes, mining minerals and public service real estate. The remainder of those four categories would stay as they are today. The school fund levy, which as is noted, applies only to geographic areas of the county within the King William County School Division. And this is not included in town of West Point. And if you notice, those four are bold and. It includes the one cent reduction in funding that would go to the school division. The other four, as noted, other than our bold, they would remain the same. Districts two through five, which is a combined levy, and that's for property owners that are within the King William County School Division. If you look at the school fund. The real estate, the mobile home, the mines and mineral and the public service real estate has been reduced by one penny. The general fund has been reduced by half a cent. And the total levy then, as we said earlier, would be eighty-four and a half percent, or eighty-four and a half cents for those four categories. And the other four categories would remain the same. Now, this budget is built on assessed vehicle values that are not increased from FY22 for personal property. But the board is considering, as you know, in your discussion, discounting vehicle personal property tax bills to equalize with FY22 levels. Those are decisions that are still to be made. I believe that'll be taken up at either your next work session or your next meeting, which will be on April the 25th. For personal property. So that matter is not settled. It's not part of this recommendation. But we know there's further discussions and probable decisions that are to be made. Coming down the road. Ms. Chairman, with that, I would turn it over to the board for, for public hearing.
Thank you.
Ms. Chairman, just, just to cover the discussion, I, I think it's worth mentioning that I think there is consensus. And anyway, feel free to shake me off if I'm wrong, but that we, we are planning to reduce the real estate tax another one cent on the school side, which will still leave them wholly funded. And we are, there is consensus to discount the personal property. The only thing that we're lacking now is the number by which we need to reduce it. To accommodate for whatever the value increases. We're just waiting on those numbers. So those, those decisions while not formalized and codified yet, I think there is consensus to move forward with, with those reductions. Forty-six on the school side, virtually three and a half.
Okay. Well, taken. We're going to go ahead and open up the public comment period for the proposed tax levy, same rules as before, three minutes per, five minutes if you're with a group. We'll go ahead and open it up this time. Anyone online, Ms. Branch? Anyone? All right. We're going to go ahead and close the public comment period on proposed tax levies. Mr. Ashcraft?
Good evening. This matter was already brought to your attention, just as a reminder. We are proposing to raise some of the connection fees. So according to the code, it is by ordinance that the fee schedule is changed. And the only changes that we are proposing would be for the lower meter sizes, five eights up to one and a half inch meter sizes. Each of those fees would increase by a hundred dollars and that is to offset the costs that the county would be taking on in. Installing those meters. Up until this point, it's always been the developer that installed those meters. Now the county is proposing to do that to help keep them getting, the meters getting beat up in somebody's truck for a month and then we have to fix it. Any questions?
Is, is that actual cost or was it a figure in there for profit? So far as.
No, this, that hundred dollars would be less than the cost of time to actually do that. It's just to help offset it.
Any other question? At last this evening, the. Public comment period for the utility fee increases, three minutes for single, five minutes for group. Now open for public comment. And just to double check, no one online? No one? We'll go ahead and close public comment period for utility fee increases. I think, let's see, next up is Ms. Bancroft to talk about the delinquent tax collection update.
Good evening. How are you all? It's good to see you. Good. Happy Founder's Day. I hope you all got to enjoy some of the Historical Society activities. That was very nice. I enjoyed it. I'm sorry. It was so nice. They did an awesome job. All right. I believe you all have before you some information regarding personal property delinquent reports as well as real estate delinquents. You've got the figures before you. Please keep in mind that in the real estate amount, approximately 1.1 million was turned over to the taxing authority. So of that, that you see in your real estate collection amount, I'm sorry, delinquent amount, the 1.1 million is in tax. So as you all recall, that was turned over prior to my coming on board. And they have collected to date. From the amount that was initially turned over to them, which was. Three million, one hundred and eighty thousand, eight eighty-one. It is now down to one million, one thirty-seven. And that's about a forty point, forty-three percent, percent of collected. They had received 247 accounts and the account active now is 184. And you'll be pleased to know that I talked to one of the parcel owners today who was turned over to tax and I am expecting a hundred and seven thousand dollars today or tomorrow. Well, it was supposed to be today, but I imagine tomorrow. So that's a little bit of news.
How many of those parcels that the, I guess it's tax or whatever. Have not been addressed at all so far as any, any payments made on delinquent taxes, do you know?
I don't know the amount that no one has acted upon. I imagine I can get that from them though. But they do make an attempt on everyone. And of course, as you all recall, I put in the paper last year in May. And again, later on in the year, parcels that I plan to sell at a tax sale, that has garnered a lot of attention. And that's one of the ones that was in the papers, promised to give me a hundred and seven thousand dollars.
So far as delinquent personal property taxes, it is a cutoff, it's a period of time. Was it five years?
It's five years. And if I file a judgment, that gets me an additional five years. So I did file quite a few warrants for judgments last year and I anticipate doing the same. I'm also enacting, I'm actively pursuing some distress liens. And I'm working with Virginia Auction Company and they will work with me on personal properties to. Seize properties that are seriously delinquent.
Is that a, a fee involved in that?
There's no.
They add the fee to.
Their fees, their fees are all taken from whatever they.
Proceeds from.
Yes.
And these properties are being advertised, I assume through the tide of word review and other, other mechanisms. Web, our county website is uploaded.
Yes, we have uploaded all the most recent delinquent real estate.
Do you ever get any complaints about, I didn't know?
On the ones that I've put in the paper? Well, yeah, there was a gentleman who had to tell his daughter, why, why was his family's name in the paper? He did not know. But very rarely do they not know.
And is tax responsible for notifying or your office?
The taxing authority folks are notifying on the real estate. I am doing the personal property. And I'm looking now to, I'm sending banks, letters with liens requested for anybody who's got. Accounts at these banks that owes the county money. So I'm enacting that as well. Which I don't believe that's been done in the past. And I did collect just in, on one particular. Citizen aspect, you could say, excuse me, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in penalties in the month of March. So.
Is it, would it be possible to get a representative either on Zoom or from tax to, to come to the board?
Absolutely.
And explain, maybe explain the process so far as auctioning these properties. Seems to me they have all the information.
Absolutely.
Parcels, the ones that might be coming up soon. I know it was a very long list of them that were. Delinquent for a number of years.
Absolutely. Yeah, they, they go back quite a ways. And like, for instance, the gentleman who's just been paying me, his goes back to 2016. So some do go farther back than that. But yeah, I spoke to John Wright on Friday. He's an attorney at the taxing authority and he said he was very happy to come and speak with you all or by Zoom.
You mentioned a percentage of completion. I think I might have missed it.
On the taxing authority folks?
Of, of the properties that are delinquent. How many have you collected? How many are remaining?
They have.
Just roughly.
Yeah, the, the percentage that the taxing authority folks have collected so far is 40.43%. Of the three million, one hundred and eighty thousand, eight eighty-one that was referred to them. I think so.
So what's, I assume that they have established a, a payment plan, is what it works out to.
Some folks are on a payment plan. It is my decision to allow a payment plan or not allow a payment plan. And in some instances, I will not allow a payment plan.
It's, it's my understanding that they have that one chance.
You have.
And once they are delinquent, then the property, I think the statute says shall be sold. Is that correct?
They have the opportunity to pay 50% down and they can pay the remainder of the amount owed in 12 months. If they do not honor that, that's it. The, the deal's off.
Thank you.
Any questions about the delinquents? I'll give you a, a smidgen of, I did do a comparison of cash receipts from May 1 of 20 to March 31st of 21 versus. Four, one of 21 to three, twenty-nine, twenty-two. And we have collected just in penalty and interest, 262,006, 7249 more than the prior year in penalty and interest.
Has that been included in the budget numbers as extra income or?
I'm not sure how that works.
Good question. It was on my mind. I wasn't sure.
Well, I mean, think about it. I collected a hundred and seventy thousand dollars alone in, in one month, just for penalty and interest. I collected sixty-some thousand dollars in the month of February in penalty and interest. And I'm very serious. I will, I stand my ground. If the county has not made an egregious error, I stand my ground on penalty and interest.
Except we haven't had this in the past, so we would never have added this before. So that might.
I don't know if it's a good idea to do budgetary.
No, I'd say let it be a, a sort of a bonus, I guess. Sort of.
I don't know why not, because she knows the exact number she's gotten.
No, no, no. I mean, if you're speaking of the library or something like that. We don't know we're going to get that money next year.
True.
Right. It's, it's. I'm, I'm on the fence about that because yeah, I get that because you should probably treat it as one-time money, but you can. Probably realistically hope that that's going to be something that exists for at least a few years. So you could probably get away with it, but I don't know that it's.
Yeah, because my goal is to get, my goal is to get people caught up.
Right.
You know, I don't want large penalty and interest amounts, but it's there and I'm going to get it.
Right. That's Mr. Hodges' point is we're looking at that, at that money as it comes in.
Yes.
We need to not view that necessarily as recurring revenue.
Exactly.
Because that's not something that we hope to be on the books for years and years and years.
Exactly.
Situation that we find ourselves in right now, it does look as though reasonably, we can probably assume that we've got at least a couple of years of it coming.
It's nice. Yeah, it's nice to have it.
So we can keep that in mind.
I don't think, I don't think we should anticipate a 33% increase next year's.
Before we decide, before we decide what we plan on doing, what the, we need to reconcile the accounts. I mean, that.
Yeah. Totally different, right? I'm saying, yeah, I don't, I guess, I'm asking to be added into the budget. I'm saying that money that we actually get, put that somewhere. Right. That's all.
Can be usable this year.
Right, right. Because we don't know. And I mean, now it is a lot coming in. It's going to hopefully do in the land of nothing. And once everything gets caught up, hopefully everything will be like it's supposed to.
Yeah.
And there won't be any.
Exactly.
But that'll never be the case.
But then I'll send to leave.
We don't live in a perfect world.
There's money you could.
Yeah.
Lots about that.
I feel very good about collections. I really do.
And I, I take this as good news for sure.
Yeah.
I think it's, I think it's looking up.
I'm, I'm pretty aggressive in, you know, I'm a taxpayer. I've been here for 26 years and I paid my taxes on time every time. And I just believe that's a fact of life and you know this, if you live in any county, pay your taxes.
And there are going to be situations where you have to be a little more tolerant.
Sure.
Hopefully you're taking those into consideration.
Absolutely. Mm-hmm. Yes.
Pay your taxes so you don't pay their bill.
That's right.
Sometimes, sometimes people forget.
Yeah.
And sometimes people just can't.
A 10% can be right much.
One thing I'd like to do is, I got this idea from another treasurer is right before tax time and say, for instance, in June and then again before December. Just place some signs around the county to say, don't forget, your taxes are due June 25th. You know, and likewise, don't forget your taxes are due December. Because a lot of folks will say, oh, I didn't, I didn't know. Oh, I heard on Facebook that the date moved. No, it didn't. Or, you know, for real estate, the dates never changed. So I'd like to be able to do that.
Interesting idea.
There's a few signs out there, maybe they'll do any use.
Okay.
All right. So if you don't have any further questions, I will move. I am standing right here. Okay. So keep in mind what I just told you, all that good news. Okay. As you consider my agenda, resolution 22.22 and where I'd ask for additional funds for the temporary employee that I did engage from Robert App Associates. He stayed a while longer than I had ever anticipated and it cost me more than I thought. He did a lot of good work, a lot of prep work. It got everything in place for my deputies to continue on with what he had started. We do have the VML gentleman working on the rest of the schools reconciliation. But as far as the general funds, the accounting has been done for, through June of last year for that. So. I did need additional funds for that from the unsigned funds.
We're on resolution 2222.
Yes.
Yes. All right. You came to us twice.
I know.
And then you continued to spend. I have a problem with that.
I understand.
Big time.
I understand.
You ended up. We approved 22,216,080 and you spent 41,030 and 42 cents.
Yes.
And is that figure, I, I don't know, I'm using a calculator, but is that figure eighteen, eight fourteen twenty four correct? Or is it like sixty two cent off?
Oh, I didn't catch that.
I mean, that's, and maybe I hit too many numbers on the calculator.
I see that, yeah.
It, it looked like to me it came out about sixty two cent off. Should have been eight, eighteen, eight thirteen sixty two is what I, I think.
I did not double check it. I'm sorry.
I, I agree with Bill. I would think the chronological, the chronological order should have been once you spent the initial appropriated money before any other bill was generated, we, we should have known, you should have come to us.
Yeah, I had no idea it was gonna take that long or it, it took that long. I had no idea.
It's, but he never finished it.
He was asked to go ahead and, um, exit.
At, at the point that the bill was figured out at forty grand, correct?
Well, I've received bills after he had left. I, they had not finished sending me their bills.
I don't know. When, when I spend money out of my checkbook, I know if I'm over eighteen thousand dollars, I can say, it probably, I'd be in back of wagon going to jail, but.
Well, I didn't know what to expect in the, the severity of getting the account reconciled or the difficulty in getting the account reconciled. I had no idea it would be so difficult.
But like Mr. Garber said, we, and we still didn't finish it. We had to hire another firm as of yet. And that's what, another eighteen or so thousand?
I do not know what that cost would be.
You got an estimate in there, correct?
We, we got it. We got an hourly rate.
That was the estimate. Okay, we're on twenty two twenty two, so.
So is this, okay. So they're claiming this is money we owe.
Oh, Robert App Associates, yes.
So they're saying these are hours worked that they're, that they're billing.
Yes.
Okay. If we, on our side, have we seen the invoice?
Yeah.
Okay. We fundamentally agree that this is the case. Right. Well, sure. And so then my, my second question will go to the, the exertion of control on this end because, you know, the board did appropriate a set amount of money. I think we're all interested in knowing how we managed to exceed it. What level of control was, was, was. When we appropriated that amount of money, was that supposed to be a budget? Was that an estimate based on an hourly rate?
Was that a?
It was, it was an exact amount because.
I didn't anticipate him staying any longer than September. That was what I had factored.
Well, I think, I think the argument is it should have, it should have come back to the board for additional appropriation. Once, once it was realized that, that that money was used and, and he hadn't finished his, his good work.
Right. And again, that's why I have a question as well for the firm themselves. If they were, you know, working under the, the directive of this was the budget that they were working under, why did they exceed it by almost all?
We were trying to do what we could do to, to get the job done.
Right, but at a certain point, again, when you're exceeding a, a double-digit budget by double, somebody at some point has to say something. Because if I, if I was a firm, or if I, I wouldn't even do that. If I was a firm and I was working with an approved budget of twenty thousand dollars and I saw my hours surpassing that, I would want some type of guarantee that my work beyond that was going to be paid.
Right. I was instructed to do what it took to get it, keep going forward on the settlement. I was instructed to do, to do what it took to get it required to continue on working on the reconciliation.
So I think then the message writ large is obviously, this is not a situation that this board is obviously pleased to find itself.
I understand that.
All right.
You can bet it won't happen again.
Right. We would like to, uh, avoid such misadventures in the future. But as Mr. Ashcraft said, uh, it's, it's a bill for work that's been rendered. Uh, and unless we have any grounds that I don't, I think it would be hard to come by. Uh, it's, it's money we owe. Uh, I will go ahead and, um, make the motion that we approve resolution twenty two dash twenty two.
But before we do that.
Yeah, it's made a resolution, but you can have.
All right, let's, let's get, yeah, let's, let's thank it to discussion. There's a second out there for it, so.
Was, was there a reason, was there any form of?
Give it a second.
A second.
We have a second.
Second, or are you waiting?
I'll second, okay.
Now, welcome for discussion.
Okay. Wa- was there any form, form of a written contract with them or it was just a verbal agreement? We need you, here you are?
Oh, no, I had something from Robert App Associates that I had signed.
For, for both, for the initial and, and the second?
Just for his services, just in general, just the services. And they would come and say, hey, do you, do you still need him? And I've said, yes, I need him for another, you know, week or two, what have you. So they would inquire if I still needed him.
But there was a contract, so.
Yes.
Was it based on some performance criteria that he would get to X, Y, or Z at some point in his work?
Well, no, that, that wasn't up to them. That was up to us that, where I needed, what I needed him to do for us was to help us get to a point where we could reconcile the accounts. And so he worked nonstop on reconciling the accounts and clearing the, the items that he would see on the bank statement. It was very, very difficult. And so I've got my two deputies working on that now and they're still having a very difficult time. But we, we're past the, the, for the general fund, you know, that's been done up to June of twenty twenty one. And so now my staff is working on past that. And it's very difficult, but we do have the gentleman working on the school funds.
Any other discussion items? They're being done this branch, if you call roll.
Hey. Hi.
That's done. I'll say, I thought it might could. Hey.
We, we caused it when it approved.
Hi. I don't know what the alternative is.
Yeah.
Just to.
Hey, that's what I said. Like, this sort of similar situation with the assessment.
Really?
I mean, they had a contract not to be paid and they were paid anyway. If we couldn't.
Wouldn't like it, but we could make her absorb it.
Well, I like to think that a hundred and seventy thousand dollars I just got in late penalties would more than cover that.
That's not the way it works.
I understand that.
That's, I guess we should have held the previous county minister accountable for the two hundred thousand we spent for the assessment too. We're not gonna do that either.
No.
Okay.
We're twenty three.
Next, resolution twenty two twenty three.
Okay, so the taxing authority consulting services, um, we've been getting, um, invoices for their services, uh, which I was not aware. Um, the contract was signed before I came on board. I believe you've got a copy of that. And you'll notice in section three of the legal services agreement, the county understands that certain costs will be incurred in the process of conducting judicial sales of properties subject to delinquent real estates. Anticipated costs include but are not limited to the research, appraisal, surveys, court costs, or service fees, publication costs, and the guardian ad litem fees that are ultimately responsible to the county to pay. Such costs shall be accounted for and paid to the county prior to any paration of recovered funds. County acknowledges that tasks may elect to perform services required in the collection of delinquent real estate taxes, including but not limited title research with its own employees and may be reasonably compensated for such services performed. So with that, um, I have received bills to date. Um, let's see, of eight thousand four ninety eight forty six. And that was through March seventeenth. I anticipate at least another three thousand from them by the end of June. However, that could be more depending on their title searches and difficulties and that sort of thing. So that rep would bring the request to twelve thousand four ninety eight forty six to this point. But I do not know if they will go past that.
So this, the way I read this, this is more or less what title work for properties that are coming, coming to sale.
Yes.
What, what is it, uh, the length of this contract return? I didn't see that in there.
It can be canceled within, um, ninety days written notice. That's ninety days.
See, my, my understanding is that each treasurer signs this agreement, that, that Mr. Witt signed the initial agreement, which he supplied us, Mrs. Wilson.
Mary Wilson signed the original.
Did you, did you sign a contract also?
I did not.
Okay.
So explain again why tax can't, can't include this as a cost of doing business and.
Well, they don't front that for the client, was what I was told last week. Um, so they do recoup the costs first though, however, in either what they collect the money for the taxes owed or if they sell it, the administrative costs get taken first.
When, when the property sold, those fees come back out of the net proceeds and it goes back into the general fund.
Yes, that's correct. And not all companies do it that way. I did, um, speak with a gentleman Friday in my office, another firm. And he doesn't charge upfront costs at all.
It was my understanding that this agreement so far is the collection of delinquent taxes, not the sale of properties, that those fees were added to the amount of, that, is that the way it works?
That is correct.
So you don't do this anymore. This is the old contract of a re.
It's still an act.
Oh.
It's still enforced right now.
They're, they're the one, we just got the report of, of the, the sales and collections.
Forty two.
That's, this is, this is stuff that, that would then, as I understand it, is being explained right now, then be, um, effectively offset by the sale.
Yes.
Once the sale happens.
Or the collection of the taxes.
Right. So they just make us pay upfront.
Right.
So, um, this would then logically be offset by the sales that take.
Which there are some properties that might come up to sale that the judge is not gonna approve the, the amount also that happens.
Okay. Anyone care to make the motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty two twenty three.
Second.
Moved and properly second. Any further discussion?
Hold, hold on. Yeah.
Are we doing twelve thousand something? Are we doing?
Right, I'm gonna ask.
Yeah.
Because, yeah, the resolution, the resolution says eighty five hundred and anticipating into three thousand, but then says that we're appropriating eighty five hundred online.
I didn't read.
All right. Say that before we win the president.
Okay, all right, that's fine. We just wanted to make sure we understood the intent of the language.
What we want to do now is my question.
We want to do eighty five.
Eighty five.
Do we know what?
Yeah.
Come back.
So when, when the additional three thousand is needed at this, this time, you will, it will come back to the board and we will appropriate the funds.
And I want to make sure I have the latest, it says done this twenty eighth day of March. This is, do I not have a, up to the eleven, April eleventh?
Right.
If we could. We had this as a previous agenda, yes. I think you were out, not available or something.
I was not here, yeah.
Okay.
Change your mind.
This branch?
Hi.
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 Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Ms. Brant. Okay, we're up, uh, I think that, I think we've got everything. So, uh, Mr. Hodges, Board of Supervisors requests your turn, sir.
A lot of stuff. I think, you know, it, it is irritating dealing with this and this bill, uh, basically a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we're, it's like all or nothing. There, there isn't, I don't see any negotiation. And that's what I was, I actually came in thinking that we could do something. But it's almost like you either take it or leave.
I, I.
Be a ten percent.
That, going over your comment, I just, not being able to break it down so that we're only paying for a King William portion and share.
Yeah. Maybe this is a good deal. I don't know, but if I figured correctly, it was hot spots of three nineteen forty four month. I don't know if that's a good deal or not.
No, I was paying a lot.
They said we're getting like twelve.
But anyway. Uh, yeah, I just, I, I think we should have been able to break out the hot spots because what you're doing is you, you almost kept comparing King William with Hanover County and they got a five hundred and fifty, five hundred and thirty two million dollar budget. I mean, that they're working off of.
Probably a little bit more than that. Uh, probably over six hundred million.
Boy, you tell your deck.
They, they, they have a higher percentage.
But seriously, I mean, that's, a- and I'm guessing a board represented by all the counties is making a decision on what they're adding and we're stuck with it, you know? Uh, or you cut the libraries and I, I, they're gonna show that I won't cut the libraries out. And I do know they've used a lot. They've used in the middle of the mornings and the afternoons. But that's all, so.
Okay.
What else to go with?
Understand. Mr. Garber?
Yeah, you know, I was like Travis. I was shocked when I, when I saw that email that my wife got on those tactics. They angered me. And, uh, I, it just, it's too much of an increase for one year. They don't seem to want to negotiate. And like Bill said, that's kind of like it's all or nothing. I, I don't understand that. I don't understand that. Uh, if they're getting basically thirty three percent less, how, how they're gonna, uh, cut fifty percent of the benefits, like Travis said. I don't, the math doesn't work with me. But, uh, it, you know, that is what it is. And, uh, I was gonna say, uh, I look forward to someone from tax coming to explain to us, you know, when and how these properties are gonna come up for sale. I'd like to see them well advertised, maybe on, on the county site so, so people can see them. If it's, if it's them, maybe they'll hire an auction company and advertise it itself. But, uh, anyways, that's pretty much it.
Just like everybody else who's really upset hearing this as well, but like I said, there are still options. Everybody keeps saying it's all or nothing. There's still options. We either go with flat funding and it's fifty percent cuts. They just, we pick the hours. Or we can give them any amount between flat funding and what they ask and maybe up, they can be seventy percent. We can bring it to eighty percent. We can figure out anything. But I don't like doing that. Another option was, now that, because we talked about this in the past, we never looked at it before because it was a joint effort between all the counties and it was reasonable then. Maybe it's not reasonable now. What, would it take for us to start our own library? We've got the land. We can get somebody to build a building. Maybe we can go in with just King and Queens. I know King and Queen isn't gonna pass it either. But maybe we could go in with King and Queen and have our own libraries. But I don't know. Does anyone know? Can we look into that? That's my comment. Can we look into something about?
We, we were, we were planning on having a, a, a discussion in a few months about the possibility of, of building.
Well, that's just a building. We need to know.
Yeah.
A company to run it. I mean, would the county run it? Is there, would we go with, I mean, just come on the regional library association? I mean, are there other things we can join or start our own to run the library? I mean, I don't, that's something I'd like to look into.
We've talked briefly about establishing a, a citizens working group of sorts to bring together experts and, and ideas and vet them and, and come up with a plan. There's, there's several options we've talked about, so yes. It's certainly on the hopper.
That's my comment. And I said, I'm not gonna vote for giving them everything. That's just the way it is. Like, as Mr. Garber said, out of the twenty thousand emails or whatever they sent out to the members, twenty people responded. That's ten percent. I mean, the rest of them are okay with it, so. I don't know.
Oh, God. Mr. Muscosky?
I mean, not much more to add. Uh, I think I said, I think I said more than I usually say it in this situation tonight, if anything. You know, there, there's gotta be realistic expectations at a certain point. And it just, it really, it baffles me. In all my years of this, I've never seen somebody stand up in front of me in straight face, ask me for a thirty five percent increase in their budget without any.
Hesitation.
Without any, uh, expectation that there might be some type of negotiation that would happen. And I mean, there, so when the message. And I mean, there, so when the message went out today, I guess, it, well, hey, this is, no one told us that this was gonna be a fifty percent reduction, it would have been nice to know. They came back with a, a counter offer that was a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, again, as if that just can materialize and appear and not affect anything else in the budget. And I, it just, I don't understand it, I'm having a really hard time understanding it. And I guess that's what fundamentally offends me about the whole ordeal is that there seems to be a fundamental lack of understanding in how a locality makes a budget and how, y- y- you know, you're going to then throw that out at a, at a, you know, the weekend before a public hearing. You know, and, and it, and it kills me because I have been a, a strident, consistent supporter of the library and Stephen will tell you that there have been years that I've fallen on my sword and given up other budget priorities of mine to defend funding for the library, and so just the, the, the lack of, of in, in adherence to reality in this instance is what, is what really has me upset because I feel like there is more they could be doing, I feel like there's more that could be explaining, and I feel like I'm left now with more unanswered questions than I had coming in about exactly why level funding, an organization that already gets almost a half a million dollars a year would result in my citizens getting a fifty percent reduction, and why I have to be the one that answers to that and not them. They're the ones managing that organization. And so those are the questions that need to be answered before I'm willing to consider anything more than what we're doing. And if I can be answered satisfactorily and there is money to fund this in some way, that, which there certainly will not be money to fund all of it, but if, if we can soften the blow in some way, I'll consider it. But again, a hundred and forty-five thousand dollar increase on a half million dollar budget, what are we getting in additional services? As well, I, 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 I was so befuddled in even what to try to get out of this, that, you know, that would have been a great question to have answered, maybe one that we can go back and have answered. That level of increase, if we're giving a department within King William County that level of increase, we are increasing service level, we're not maintaining service level, we're adding. And I was given no impression that that request includes any additional services. So, again, I have many more questions after tonight than I had going in, and I'm left even more upset at the implication that level funding an organization that gets that much money from us every year would result in a fifty percent reduction in services to our citizens, and I wanna know why, and I was not answered satisfactorily tonight. Why is it gonna end up that way?
If I can add one more thing, I know it's, I'm speaking out of turn here, but the other thing is, if we allow it to happen at this point, everyone, that everyone's gonna present more, much more than what they're asking for, and they will approach it the same way through, through media. I mean, it's, it, it, it was just, it's always possible.
And I agree, the, the tactic, maybe.
Words extortion comes to mind when I saw that post.
Right, it, it doesn't acknowledge the amount of money that we already get, well, here's something else that I'm gonna throw out there to, to staff while we're at it. I think at this point in time, that's an organization that demands an awful lot of our outside agency budget. It's the single biggest outside agency, if you're not counting schools, all right? At this point in time, something is fundamentally not functioning right on that board, and I'm wondering if it's time that we demand either staff or elected official representation on that board as a condition of our continued membership. Because if they're gonna ask for a hundred of thirty-three percent increase year over year, then that shows me that nobody on that board understands how local budgets work.
We have.
Right, but I don't think it's an elected official.
No, it's appointed.
Right. But I, I think if they're, if they're getting, I mean, if they're getting that much money out of Hanover and King and, and, and Goochland for this, I can't imagine that.
How did we get stuck with those big counties anyway? Seems like we got stuck with low.
I don't know, it's just the whole thing, the whole thing, it's the more thing about it, the, the more angry I get about the whole situation that they put us in, and it's really, it's really unfortunate for our citizens to be stuck in this situation where we, as a, as, as a funding organization, think that we're, we're maintaining effort pretty well here and giving them a good amount of money, and then it just, it doesn't.
It, it would be interesting to see how much of the increase percentage-wise can over.
Well, I wanna know that too, and I don't wanna hear it from the library, I wanna hear it from Hanover and from Goochland, how much they're funding.
Because, uh, the, the member of the Board of Supervisors that I spoke to today in, in King and Queen, they, they were looking at a projected thirty-five percent increase, and they are very angry also. They were approached the same way, emails.
One thing, gentlemen, I'd like to propose, uh, and hosting another budget and planning meeting, perhaps. We, we've got major issues to, to discuss and roll through. If you wanna do this via single phone calls or emails, or sit in here and, and plow through it. Yes, no?
No.
Mr. Garber, no?
Either way, you know, I, I'm pretty much set, you know, with what I've said, well, what, with what I've said in the past, and certainly if the monkey regional library, I'm not on board after, after what's happened with, with, under any circumstances. You know, uh, Mr. Ashcraft, you know, he stepped up to the plate and, and he recommended level funding for them. And I certainly trust him, and everything that's happened, I would not change with them.
But it's not only this topic, it's all the other loose ends that we've.
Well, Travis pretty much hit on it, I think we, we pretty much, as a majority, agreed to another cent off, off the schools. I think, I think we all agree with that, we all agree that we're gonna be working on, uh, a, a reduction in personal pro- personal property, we don't know what that number is yet, but, and then it's always the additional, uh, uh, positions that we were gonna add, everybody knows how I feel about that. But, you know, everybody's entitled to their thing.
You're making my argument for me, we need a budget planning.
Well, I could, you know, basically, I am, I am where I am, and that's where I'm gonna be.
Will you support a budget planning meeting? An additional budget planning meeting?
We can discuss this, but I, you're not gonna get a good answer out of me tonight, one way or another, that I'll feel good about, so, let's, let's discuss that later. Oh, no, we, we, we can, it's just, it's a matter of.
Motion to convene closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to convene a closed meeting in accordance with section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven eight one of Code of Virginia to consider a personnel matter involving the appointment of individuals to boards and commissions and a personnel matter involving the assignment of salaries of specific public employees, and in accordance with section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven eight three of the Code of Virginia regarding real property used for a public purpose specifically pertaining to the acquisition of real property for a public purpose because discussion in an open meeting may adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the board, and in accordance with section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven eight twenty-nine of the Code of Virginia to discuss the terms or scope of a public contract because discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining positions or negotiating strategy of the board.
Check again.
Motion made and properly seconded, any further discussion, if none, Ms. Branch?
Hi.
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 Bye.
I moved, then we reconvene the meeting in open session.
Motion properly seconded, Ms. Branch.
Hi.
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 Chairman, I move that we accept S, S R one.
Motion properly seconded, Ms. Branch.
Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Hi, Mr. Chair, um, if it pleases the board, I would like to move adjournments.
That is extremely professional.
What if it don't?
Motion properly seconded, Ms. Branch.
Hi.
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 Bye, good night, gentlemen.